All right, it's five after. It looks like we'll go ahead and get started. Maybe we'll get started a little bit of housekeeping for the webinar. Let's go with that.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, we have Diana Orozco as our Spanish interpreter. So if you do need Spanish interpretation, you can go ahead and click on the globe icon, and that's going to be located at the bottom of your screen in your Zoom controls. And you can just go ahead and click on Spanish. We have also linked the Spanish presentation in the chat for you to follow along.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Amanda Champalillo. I'm an environmental protection specialist for the Federal Railroad Administration. I first want to thank everyone for coming in and spending some time with us today on Saturday morning. We appreciate your time and your attention. And of course, most importantly, your comment on the project that we'll be talking about today, our Coachella Valley Rail Project. The team here and both on the call today and lots of other folks behind the scenes have been working for years on this project to get it to where it is today. And we're really excited to bring this to you and show you the work that we have been doing and get your feedback so that we can make this project even better and get feedback on the potential folks who really this project will impact the most. And with that, I will turn it over to Sheldon to talk through the rest of the introduction today. But thank you for being here.
Excellent, and thank you, Amanda. And I too want to appreciate everyone joining us this morning. My name is Sheldon Peterson. I am the RCPC Rail Manager. We've been working with the leadership of Coachella Valley officials for a number of years actively pursuing this intercity rail corridor from Los Angeles to the Coachella Valley. We see this project is transformational. It can provide a new opportunity for mobility in the region that would benefit both disadvantaged communities and promote economic development and basically a connection between the Coachella Valley and the rest of Southern California. I truly want to thank our partners, the FRA, Caltrans, and our consultant team, the HGR, for giving us this milestone with the release of the public environmental document. We're excited to get your input today. And just as a note, this will be recorded as well and put on our website as well as other materials are on our website as well. So we'll go ahead and get started with a brief flyover video of the project. And then our project manager, JD Douglas, will provide an overview of the process. And at the end, we'll have opportunities for questions. So with that, here's the video.
Living in Southern California gives us access to the ocean, the mountains, the city, and the desert. With a growing number of entertainment options, it's no wonder the Coachella Valley is seeing a record-breaking number of visitors each year. But traveling along I-10 in either direction can be frustrating due to traffic and hours behind the wheel. Wouldn't it be great if we had a more relaxing way to travel? Southern California has the second busiest passenger rail corridor in the nation, extending north and south between San Diego and Santa Barbara. What's missing is the west-east connection between Los Angeles and the Coachella Valley. The Coachella Valley San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor Service proposes to connect Southern California communities to the beautiful Coachella Valley, providing a reliable and environmentally friendly way to access many attractions. The Riverside County Transportation Commission, Caltrans, and the Federal Railroad Administration are proposing a 144-mile passenger rail corridor to help get you out of your car and on your way to a new adventure. Let's take a peek at the future possibilities. At the western end of the rail line is picturesque Los Angeles Union Station, which boasts the largest railroad passenger terminal in the western United States with countless local and regional connections. Traveling east from Los Angeles, the first stop is Revitalize Downtown Fullerton. Listen to music, discover architecture, and enjoy this popular entertainment destination and cultural center. This stop also provides access to Disneyland and other amazing attractions and venues in Orange County. Our journey continues east to downtown Riverside. This bustling area offers museums, theaters, dining, and the historic Mission Inn Hotel and Spa that sponsors its annual Festival of Lights. A station in the San Gorgonio Pass will provide access to the growing communities of Banning and Beaumont, a world-class resort and spa, shopping, and the famous Cabazon dinosaurs. Our next stop is Palm Springs, the vibrant and legendary getaway city with great nightlife and stunning desert scenery. The line continues east to the heart of the beautiful Coachella Valley, home to premier golf courses, dining, resorts, spas, gaming, and miles of hiking and cycling trails, including Joshua Tree National Park. Our journey finishes at the eastern end of the rail line with potential stops in Indio and Coachella near world-renowned music festivals and unique celebrations, such as the Date and Tamale Festivals. Whether you're traveling east or west, there's a new adventure waiting for you at each stop. We're approaching our next milestone of the project with the release of the draft environmental impact statement, Environmental Impact Report. While service is still years away, we are laying the foundation and actively seeking funding now to make this journey a reality for the future. Visit our webpage to learn more about this innovative project. Most importantly, we want to hear from you. So please provide your feedback on our draft environmental document. We are on this journey together. So let's imagine the possibilities of the future.
And good morning, everyone. My name is JD Douglas, and I am the consultant team project manager for the Coachella Valley Rail Project. I'm going to be providing the presentation for you this morning. And on screen now, you'll see our agenda for the morning. So I will go through that briefly, and then we'll dive into the presentation. First, we're going to provide an overview of what this project is all about. I'll spend a minute talking about the purpose and need statement, which is the foundational statement governing what the project is trying to accomplish. We'll talk a little bit about the history of this program and prior planning activities that have brought us to this point. And then we'll get into specifics relative to the environmental document itself. We'll talk about the alternatives that are being evaluated in the document. And then how you can get accessibility to the document to review it and what opportunities you have and the different ways you can comment. At the end of my presentation, we'll have a question and answer period, which is not part of the public comment period, but to give you an opportunity to ask clarifying questions so you understand what the project is all about. And then after the Q&amp;A period, we'll have the official public comment period where you'll be able to give us your comments on the project for the record in the environmental review process. So that's an overview of what we're doing today. So let's dive right in. Today's focus is the official name, Coachella Valley San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor Service, Tier One Program Environmental Impact Statement, Environmental Impact Report. That's a long name. And the potential environmental impacts that have been identified in our study of this potential project. Our meeting today will provide you with the opportunity to comment on the draft environmental document. A couple of notes when you're commenting. Please explain the basis for your comments. Provide data or facts. Reasonable assumption based on facts or expert opinion supported by facts. And please also submit the name of a contact person who will be available if there's a need for consultation at a later time. So what is the Coachella Valley San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor Service Program? As Amanda and Sheldon mentioned in their introductions, it's a collaborative effort between the Federal Railroad Administration, Caltrans, and RCTC to study a passenger rail service between Los Angeles and the Coachella Valley, which is a distance of about 144 miles. The service would start in the west at LA Union Station and terminate on the east in either Indio or Coachella. The study area is shown on the map on the screen. And you see it extends from LA in the west. Coachella is the far terminus on the east. And the service we are studying would be initially two round trips per day between LA and the Coachella Valley with three stations in the western part of the corridor that you see on the map, LA, Fullerton, Riverside, and potentially up to six stations in the eastern half of the corridor, east of Colton. Those potential station areas are shown in the orange bar along the rail line where potential new stations could go, as well as the orange dot for the Palm Springs station that exists today and would likely be expanded and used as one of the stations for this service. I mentioned the purpose and need statement being the foundational statement for what the project is trying to accomplish. So the purpose of this service would be to provide a safe, reliable, and convenient intercity passenger rail service with the ability to meet mobility needs of residents, businesses, visitors. The purpose is driven by several needs. As we all know, the region continues to grow. There are really limited constrained travel options other than driving the car between the LA Basin and the Coachella Valley. And so especially disadvantaged communities would benefit from having an additional convenient and reliable type of transit service. In addition, it would help achieve air quality goals of the region. Next slide, please. The specific service objectives that the service is intended to accomplish. Firstly, to provide, again, a convenient, faster, more frequent service than existing transit services that connect the Coachella Valley with the greater LA Basin. To provide an alternative to driving that has reliable schedules. To have it be an affordable transportation service and thereby improving the regional travel options for people who are dependent on transit for getting around. It would be an additional mode of travel that would provide additional transportation capacity to serve the growth within the corridor. And again, it would help to achieve air quality goals for the region. We've often been asked the question, why should it be an Amtrak intercity type of rail service and not MetroLink? There are several reasons for that. Firstly, the intercity service for a long train trip like this, which is over three hours, it's preferable to have a type of train that has larger seating, more comfortable seating, lounge car, et cetera, just because of the duration of the trip. We've put in this slide the initial schedules that are envisioned for the service, just to give an idea of when it might operate. And as you can see, both from the west end to the east end, the idea is to have one trip in the morning and one trip in the afternoon in each direction. Another reason that it works better to have the intercity rail service is that there is federal law that has authorized Amtrak to operate on private railroads as long as track improvements are made so that the passenger rail service and the freight rail service can all utilize the corridor efficiently. MetroLink for commuter rail service does not have that federal legal authorization. And lastly, the intercity rail service would be funded by state agencies rather than local funds similar to other Amtrak services in the state, such as the Pacific Surf Line or trains. Next slide, please. A little bit about the history of the program and activities that have led us to this point in the planning process. RCTC started as early as 1991 to do initial feasibility studies for this type of a train service connecting LA and Indio. Between 2010 and 2013, a couple of additional feasibility studies were done. And then starting in 2013, RCTC embarked on a significant effort to do a detailed market assessment and alternatives analysis for this corridor. That was essentially the predecessor phase to this current phase that we're in now. That study evaluated five different alternative rail routes through the LA area to determine the preferred alignment for a rail corridor to connect LA with the Coachella Valley. At the end of that study, starting in July 2016, is when our current effort started. The alternatives analysis was finalized at that point. And then the outcome of the environmental, I'm sorry, the outcome of the alternatives analysis was that a preferred route was selected and moved forward into this current environmental study. In fall of 2016, the Tier One Program EISEIR was kicked off with public scoping meetings. And subsequent to that, technical studies were initiated. And the draft EISEIR was prepared, leading to its release for public review in mid-May of this year. This is an overview of the big picture process. You see on the left, the alternatives analysis completed in 2016. Our current phase in the light blue box is the program level EISEIR and service development plan, which I'll describe a little bit more in just a minute. Subsequent to this phase, the project would need to go through conceptual engineering and more detailed environmental analysis on specific projects that would be built. And that would ultimately lead to final design, construction, and operation of the service at a later date. So I mentioned that at the current phase of the process, we are developing a service development plan and this program level Tier One EISEIR. The SDP is a technical document prepared to meet the needs of the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA. It involves analyzing the service levels for the train service, identifying infrastructure needs in order to accommodate the service, modeling the route for operations to see the operation of the passenger rail service in relation to the freight rail service through the corridor, identifying station areas and how access to those station areas would need to be provided to connect the service, as well as regional connections to other rail and transit services along the route. The program level Tier One EISEIR is a joint environmental document that meets the needs of both the Federal National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, and the State of California's California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. This environmental document addresses the anticipated environmental effects associated with this rail service that we're proposing and studying for this corridor. This Tier One or program level environmental document provides the foundation or the basis for subsequent phases of environmental studies of actual projects that would be built. So this current phase is not studying specific projects that are proposed to be built. It's studying the overall service and an analysis of the types of projects that would need to be built. But they have not been specifically identified as to exactly where they would be yet. Next slide. A little bit more detail about this. The Tier One or program level process, again, satisfies both federal and state environmental requirements at this higher level of analysis. It will evaluate the effects of implementing the service in a regional context. It identifies broad areas of potential environmental effects associated with the overall program of construction and operation. And it identifies the resources, the natural resources that could potentially be effective in the study area. Again, it's a procedural planning document only and not associated with construction of any particular project that would happen in Tier Two. So the Tier Two is project-level environmental analysis for the infrastructure improvements that would get built. Tier Two would get to a more site-specific level of analysis based on the specific infrastructure improvements that are identified at that time. And once the Tier One, or I'm sorry, once the Tier Two is approved, then the next steps can go forward. But again, the Tier Two process is where projects would be studied for potential design and construction. Just a little bit about the content and the breadth of the environmental study. You'll see on this screen and the subsequent screen that it covers a full range of potential impacts, topic areas where potential impacts could occur. I'm not going to read through the entire list of these areas, but we wanted to show them on the screen so you would have a sense of the full breadth that this environmental study incorporates. Next slide, please. The environmental document studies a few alternatives. And this slide summarizes what these alternatives are. In brief, there is a no-build alternative. And there is a build-alternative route that has three service options. So I'll go through individually what these alternatives are. The no-build alternative is just basically that no action would be taken. There would not be a new intercity rail service in this corridor. For the build-alternative, there are three different options, and they relate to the eastern terminus of the corridor and the infrastructure that would be built in order to accommodate the service. Service option number one, and I should just mention briefly that all three of these service options assume the two round trips per day that we've talked about as the service that would be initiated. Service option number one has its eastern terminus in the city of Coachella. It has six stations, potentially up to six stations in the eastern half of the corridor, east of Colton. And the third track of infrastructure would be built. There are existing two tracks in this rail corridor from Colton to Coachella and beyond. Service option one would have a third track built from Colton to the eastern terminus in the city of Coachella. Service option number two, its eastern terminus would be in the city of Indio. And there would be five stations east of Colton because there would not be a station in Coachella in this service option. The new third track would again be the full length of this corridor from Colton to the eastern terminus in Indio. Service option three is similar to service option two in that the eastern terminus would be in Indio and there would be up to five stations east of Colton. The difference in service option three is that the third track in the corridor would not extend all the way to the eastern terminus in Indio. During the course of our technical study, the modeling of train operations through the corridor determined that it might be possible to achieve the service objectives of having the passenger trains operate at 90% on-time performance without degrading freight train operations, that it might be possible to achieve those service objectives without building a third track all the way from Colton to Indio. And so this scenario extends the third track from Colton to approximately Rancho Mirage or Palm Desert area where the Mid Valley Station is proposed. And so that's the extent of the third track in service option three. I'm going to go through a couple of maps now that just zoom in a little bit on the western and eastern sections of the corridor. First, the western section of the corridor. As we noted earlier, the stations would be at Los Angeles, Fullerton, and Riverside. There would not be a need for There would not be a need for additional track improvements or new stations in this part of the corridor because the existing facilities would accommodate the service and achieve the service objectives without any need for expansion. Next slide, please. The eastern section of the corridor extends again from Colton to Coachella. In this map, Coachella would be the eastern terminus and you'll see, excuse me, you'll see the areas with the thicker purple lines along the route. Those again are the areas in which stations could be considered along the route. And the Palm Springs existing station location is shown there with the black dot. Next slide. This is the eastern corridor with the Indio as the eastern terminus. And again, the station areas are the same as in the previous slide with the exception of the city of Coachella. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the availability of the environmental document for you to read and review it. And then after we talk about the document availability, the different ways that you can provide your comments. The tier one program EIS EIR was released on May 21st and is available for a 45-day review period, which will end on July 6th. The environmental document has been made available both in digital form and in hard copies. The digital availability is shown on this slide. You can go to the RCTC website, you can go to the FRA website, and you can go to regulations.gov, which is the website where comments can be submitted electronically. Next slide. There are a number of locations around Southern California where hard copies of the environmental document have been made available for review. Most of them, as you'll note on the list, are public libraries and they're also available by appointment at the RCTC offices. Next slide, please. So how to submit your comments? There are three different ways you can do that. During these public hearings, and today is the second of the two public hearings, so today is your last opportunity to submit it during a public hearing. You can do it via the online form, which is at the regulations.gov website. And that link that you see there on screen, which will also be provided to you in the chat box. That specific document number is for our project specifically. So that will take you right to the place where you would provide online comments for that regulations.gov website. And lastly, if you prefer using regular mail and writing out your comments and mailing them, the address is there. They would be sent to FRA to the attention of Amanda in Washington DC. And note at the bottom, comments that are sent via mail must be postmarked by July 6th or earlier. So that concludes our presentation. We've now come to the question and answer part of the agenda. And again, just a reminder that this part of the agenda is for answering questions to help clarify your understanding of what the project is all about. So we're not to the comment period yet, but we do want to give you the opportunity to ask questions if you're unclear about any part of the project or want to understand any aspects of it better. So Stevie, could you let folks know how they can ask their questions?
Yes, thank you JD. As we said, we are going to be moving into the Q and A portion today. I do see we already have a few questions already. You can access the Q and A at the bottom of your screen in the Zoom panel. And I'm just going to be reading them off as they come. So our first question today comes from Dan Wenzel. He is asking, would it be possible to increase the frequency of service if it proves as popular as I believe it will?
Yes, as I said, I'll go ahead and take that. For the study, we had to define the service levels, probably the minimum of the two round trips that we identified. There is always a potential in the future, especially if the infrastructure is built for the service to expand. But our study is specifically focusing on these two round trips.
Okay, great. We have another question. This one comes from Simon and Simon is asking, what is the fastest that the service could run from Palm Springs to LA if it weren't stopping anywhere else?
Yes, I mean, that's a good question. We haven't specifically studied that. Potentially, you could probably take a half hour off the schedule. But the way it looks with the track and the runtimes, it wouldn't be so much different that we would want to skip stops. We see the value in making stops along the way.
Okay, thank you for that question, Simon. We have another question from Dan Wenzel. This question is, could this service potentially be extended to Calexico or Mexicali?
Yes, Dan, at this point, we're having the final point of our study in Coachella. But going forward, there could be follow-on studies to look to expand it into Calexico or Mexicali. I know Amtrak is looking at service to Yuma and Phoenix as a potential extension. So that could be something in the future as well.
Okay, we have a couple of questions from Mariela Lorretta. She, this is regarding the high-speed rail. So the first question is, is this project connected in any way to the high-speed rail? And her follow-up question is, I understand that this project has access to the existing railway because of the nature of it being an Amtrak inter-service, intercity service. Given this, was there any need, was there a need for any agreement between this project and any company in regards to track use?
Yes, let me start off. This project is not directly related to the existing high-speed rail efforts that are taking place in the Central Valley. However, once that service connects to LA Union Station, our service would be a fantastic feeder service that would get more people to use high-speed rail in the future. The service is Amtrak InterCity using existing rail riderways. We will need to reach agreements with the freight railroads involved in the service. And we will need to do that in the future. Those agreements have not been finalized yet. And you also have a question on the technology that will be used in the stations and railways. At this point, we're looking at the existing diesel technology that is available. There are a number of years before we actually implement the service. So if any zero emissions locomotives or other more environmentally friendly opportunities are available, we will definitely explore them prior to operations. I think that answers those questions.
Okay, we do have one more question in the Q and A. Again, if you do have additional questions for our panel today, you can go ahead and open up the Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen and we are happy to answer some clarifying questions for you this morning. The question from Tom is, what does a new station in the mid Coachella Valley look like? How many acres is needed for parking, building, et cetera?
Yes, we haven't completely defined the stations, either the locations and the needs just yet. Traditionally, stations will need potentially 100 or more parking spaces, access for a platform and shelters, but they don't necessarily need to be as elaborate as like an LA Union Station. But we will coordinate with the communities to see what the best options are for each of the stations and their needs.
Okay, and we have another question. This comes from S. Robertson. They are asking, what sound mitigation efforts are planned for the San Timoteo Corridor?
What we've done initially is just done some broad overviews of potential options for treatments for sound mitigation. Once we get into the tier two and track level specific, we will identify more specific implementations for sound mitigation along the river. And basically, it's to be determined.
Okay, those are all of the questions that we have. Maybe I'll just wait a few more moments in case people had any other questions before we move on to the official comment period today. And I'm not seeing anything come through. So, oh, we do have a question from John Harrell. He is asking, what is the best case when service will begin?
That is a great question. We're pursuing advancing the project as quickly as possible. However, likely, it'll probably be at least five to 10 years before service is actually implemented. All that is dependent on the agreements, the requirements for capital improvements and our ability to secure funding. So we're doing our best, but we'll still have to wait and see when we can actually start service.
Okay, thank you for that question, John. Again, I'm not seeing anything else come through. Oh, Tom has another question. Tom is asking, what all is expected to be accomplished in this project over the next six months and in the next 12 months?
Yes, over the next six months, by the end of the calendar year, we are hoping to get a record of decision on this tier one environmental document. And that way, we will be able to then position ourselves to seek funding to move forward to the tier two environmental project level planning. So those are the next steps that we need to take over the next six to 12 months.
Okay, we have another question from Simon. Simon is asking, why can't a basic service be started sooner without any additional stations or track? There used to be service from Indio to LA.
Yes, that's a great question. Currently, Amtrak runs the Sunset Limited train that goes across the country, basically from LA with a stop in Palm Springs on its way to New Orleans. For us to run additional service or at different times, we still need to have agreements with a railroad to do that. So at this point, there's not really an opportunity to run service right away without some sort of agreement ready to go.
Okay, great. Again, if you do have a question for our panel before we get into the official comment period today, I'm going to ask for you to go ahead and enter that into the Q and A feature that's located at the bottom of your screen. And we can answer some clarifying questions for you today. Okay, we do have a question from Ryan. Ryan is asking, what were the critical factors in determining the draft schedules?
Ryan, that's a great question. When we looked at the schedules, we tried to balance not only the needs of the potential riders, which we see as more transportation or tourism focused, so they wouldn't necessarily be daily commuters. And then we also had the challenge of rail traffic near LA Union Station, which has significant commuter traffic and backlog during the peak periods. So the goal was to try to come in kind of mid-morning, arrive outside of the peak windows in Union Station and then do the same thing for an afternoon trip to kind of get out of Union Station before the afternoon peak period commuter rush. So those were the key factors. Once we get closer to actual operations, we'll work collectively to try to identify what would be the best schedules. That's kind of what drove the initial plan.
Okay, thank you for that, Ryan. Okay, I am not seeing any other Q and As coming through at this point. I'll wait a few more moments for people to get in their last minute questions. If not, then we can proceed to the official comment period for today's agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing anything come through. So I think we can start with the next portion of the agenda. Oh, we have one. We're just going to take this one final question. Looks like it's coming in from Simon. How long is it between arriving in LA and departing?
I don't know. Is there a way to pull up that slide that shows the schedule?
Yes.
Let's do that and we'll take it with us. So basically, if you took the 9:30 train out of Indio, you'd arrive in LA Union Station around 12:40 PM. If you wanted to make a same-day trip, you would then leave Union Station at 3:20 PM, getting back to Indio at about 6:20 PM. There's always a potential for overnight or longer trips, but that would be the same-day service.
Okay, I think that was our last question coming in. So I think it's okay for us to move on to the official comment period for today. So Amanda, okay, great. Okay, so thank you again for joining us this morning. Our panel is going to be here until 11:00 AM to take in your comments. We are asking that you keep your comments to three minutes per speaker. And if you do have a verbal comment for us today, you can go ahead and use the raise hand feature in the Zoom app and that will notify to me that you would like to speak. Again, we are only taking verbal comments as part of the official comment period. And if you, I don't see any call-in users, but if you do happen to call in, you can also dial star nine to raise your hand and that will notify me that you would like to speak. When I call your name, I'm going to unmute you and you just have to remember to unmute yourself as well. So we can go ahead and get started today. Just give me one second to adjust my screen. Okay, we already have some hands raised. Thank you very much. Okay, Dan, I'm going to unmute you now. So go ahead and unmute yourself when you are ready.
Good morning. I wanted to thank you very much for this great presentation. I understand the project a lot better now and I fully support it. If I could make one recommendation, it's that it would have a longer same-day turnaround time in Los Angeles, if that's possible, instead of three hours, maybe four or five hours. Other than that, I think the project should be built in such a way that it allows for further extensions to, as was stated, to Yuma, Phoenix or to Imperial County, El Centro, Calexico. or to Imperial County, El Centro, Calexico, Mexicali, and should allow for more frequency, because I think this is going to be a very, very popular service. And I'm excited about it. And I look forward to writing it. So thank you very much for your time. And I would like to be able to, that discussion of why it's Amtrak rather than MetroLink, if somebody could provide a link to that, because I would love to be able to, because I get asked that question a lot when I get asked about this project, and it had to do with funding, and I would love to have a link where I could read that and understand that more fully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. That was Dan Wenzel. Thank you for that comment today. And just as a reminder, we are going to be posting the presentation slides on our project website. So you will be able to access that information. And that's that particular slide. So thank you for your comment. Okay, our next commenter today is Todd Lieben. Todd, I am going to unmute you. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You may begin when you're ready.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Todd Liebman, and I'm the president of All Aboard Arizona. We're a nonprofit advocacy group here in Arizona that advocates for improved passenger rail in Arizona and throughout the Southwest. And I just want to express, you know, our wholehearted support, of course, for your program and your looking at this. It was an excellent presentation, and I appreciate it. We would like to advocate, though, that you not forget about one of our top priorities, which is the Daily Sunset Limited. Some of the comments and questions have centered on the fact that obviously getting a same-day return from LA would be nice. Well, the Sunset Limited on its current schedule leaves late in the evening, so that would help to accommodate that, at least with perhaps, you know, two stops at least, maybe three stops along the route. And obviously, Amtrak's working towards service improvements. Going beyond the Daily Sunset, which is really a major priority, and I would urge you not to lose sight of that, because that would really increase your mobility in the corridor without the additional operating expense. But also, we feel it's very important to keep extensions to Yuma, Phoenix, and Tucson in the mix. And one of the reasons we're so supportive of your project is because that would allow that to really become, come to fruition. Again, it was mentioned the frequency. I think year or two round trips added to a several, a couple of round trips perhaps to Tucson, Phoenix, Yuma, would really increase service in the corridor. And we feel there are a lot of Arizona travelers that would be traveling to the Coachella Valley, and this would be a tremendous opportunity to link one of the country's largest metropolitan areas and a large metropolitan area in the form of Tucson and Phoenix to LA and also the Coachella Valley region. Again, we were wholeheartedly supportive. Like to see the schedule moved up faster to get this service going as quickly as possible, and extensions, obviously, to Yuma, Phoenix, and Tucson. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this morning, and I wish you all the success with your project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Todd. Okay, continuing on, we have a hand raised from Brian, excuse me, Brian Yanity. So Brian, I'm going to unmute you, and please just remember to unmute yourself.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Thank you again for this presentation, and of course, the opportunity for us to speak. My name is Brian Yanity, and I am vice president-south of the Rail Passenger Association of California and Nevada, or RailPAC. A RailPAC is a 501(c)(3) volunteer group of railroad professionals and advocates that has campaigned for improved mobility and improved passenger rail in particular in California and Nevada since 1978. But I wanted to follow upon what my colleague at All Aboard Arizona, Todd Liebman, just said about keeping the Sunset Limited on the radar for this project, even though we do recognize that, you know, Amtrak negotiations with UP are technically separate from RCTC and FRA's negotiations on the Coachella Valley Rail Service. But the reality is they'd be using the same infrastructure. And the Daily Sunset Limited, as Todd mentioned, could complement the regional Coachella Valley Rail Service very well. Around the country, one of the markets that are served by a long-distance train, like the Sunset Limited, are shorter distance trips within that corridor. For example, the Sunset Limited could add extra schedule off-peak for someone with a round-trip ticket going on the Coachella Valley Rail during the day, and then they can go back to LA late at night or vice versa on the Sunset Limited. Because people complain about the Sunset Limited stopping in Palm Springs at, you know, between 12:30 and 2:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning if it's late. But that could actually be an advantage if you're complementing, you know, service during more quote-unquote banker's hours that the Coachella Valley Rail could be doing. But back to the, really, the focus of this EIR, RailPAC fully supports the main feature of the Preferred Build Alternative Option 1, and that is construction of a new third mainline track from 76 miles, with 76 miles in length, from Colton to Coachella along the Union Pacific Railroad's existing Yuma subdivision. And, you know, we'd like it to be more, of course, you know, more passenger track everywhere. That's our organization's position. But we do think this is a good start, and we want this record of decision to happen soon. That way, we can get to building and to doing extensions to it, like the greater frequency and speed that people are desiring more than two trips a day, and faster service, which we hope will be planned for. And along with that, back to Arizona service. Yes, RailPAC also fully supports regional trains that Amtrak has recently proposed between Tucson, Phoenix, Yuma, and the Coachella Valley and LA on top of this Coachella Valley Rail Service and on top of the Daily Sunset. And we fully support an Imperial Valley extension to Calexico. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Okay, Brian, thank you very much for your comment today. I do see that we have some questions in the Q and A. We're just going to hold off on those until toward the end of the comment period, just so we can get through all of our comments at this time. Okay, so we have a hand raised. This is from Mariela. So Mariela, go ahead and unmute yourself when you are ready.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mariela. I'm a policy advocate with Leadership Council, which is a statewide community-based organization. I am based in the eastern Coachella Valley, and most of our work focuses on the uncooperative communities in the central Coachella Valley, like Thermal and North Shore and Mecca. I'm very excited to see a project like this. It's very exciting to see transportation being expanded to those uncooperative communities who have a very hard time reaching those areas. So it's very exciting. And like the previous comment, I also think that the Option 1 is the best option. So in regards to the service, fully supportive of this project. Very excited to see it being planned. I am aware that the comment is only for the service, but I do want to mention the importance of considering green and zero emission technology, at least for the stations in Coachella Valley, just because, as your EIR mentions, these communities are very vulnerable and already have a lot of pollution in their area, especially from like the Saltin Sea and Ag burning. So that would be a very important feature to keep in mind, but fully supportive and excited for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Mariela, and for joining us this morning. As a reminder, if you do not want to provide a verbal comment today, you can go online to the regulations.gov link that we have provided in the chat, and you can provide a written comment through that avenue. So today, again, we are only taking verbal comments as part of the official public record this morning. Okay, we have a hand raised from Tom Tokheim. So Tom, I have unmuted you, and go ahead and unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Once again, I'm Tom Tokheim, and I live in Rancho Mirage, so middle of the Coachella Valley. And I think it's important to have a mid-valley station and be very convenient. The Amtrak station in Palm Springs is somewhat removed. It's three or four miles from downtown. It's, you know, got some safety issues depending upon time of day and weather issues. I really think that a mid-valley location in Palm Desert would be most functional. There's a new 11,000-seat arena approved and started in development off Cook Street. And it'll host a minor-league hockey team, and there'll be concerts and other events, totally in about 150 a year from what they've said. And so, you know, being able to get on and off the train and get to them, it'd be more convenient. There's also hotels, two or three hotels off Cook Street. And it's near the University, the Cal State, San Bernardino, Palm Desert Campus, and the UC Riverside Campus. So I think it's a safe area, and if there's adequate parking, I think it'd be very functional. I think a lot of people would utilize it there. So hopefully, that will be taken into consideration when the sites are looked at. And thank you for having this presentation. It's been very helpful for me.
Thank you, Tom, for your comment this morning. I don't see any hands raised at the moment. But again, we are going to be here until 11:00 AM, taking in your comments this morning. So if you do have a comment, you can go ahead and use the raise hand feature that's going to be located at the bottom of your screen. As I mentioned earlier, you can also provide written comments through the regulations.gov website that we have linked in the chat. This also concludes, well, this will be the final portion of the agenda today. So if you have provided a comment already and want to start your weekend, you are free to do so. We also have, will have the recordings of the meetings posted to our project website sometime within the next week. Otherwise, you are free to spend the morning with us. Again, we will be here until 11:00 AM this morning, taking in your public comments. And if you're still with us this morning and would like to provide an additional comment today, since it looks like we don't have any hands raised at the moment, and if you've already provided a comment, would like to utilize another three minutes, you are welcome to do so this morning. But if not, and you would rather provide a written comment, you can go ahead and use that regulations.gov website that we have linked in the chat. It looks like we do have a hand raised from the Assistencia. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And if you could just please provide your name for the record, that would be great. So go ahead and let us know when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Heather Ross, and I'm actually wanting to follow up regarding the two questions that I posed that have not been answered. The first was in regards to the I-10, having originally been designed to have a train corridor included, and has this not been investigated as an option? And the other question is in regards to the Ontario Airport Hyperloop Development. Has this also been considered as a transportation link to Palm Springs and Los Angeles?
Thank you very much for that comment. Right now, our panel is only receiving comments right now. I believe after the comment period has closed, they will be able to answer your questions. So I ask you for some patience while we get through this official comment period, and we will be able to provide you a clarifying answer after the close of the comment period. So thank you very much. And I do see that you have asked those questions in the Q and A. So we have those ready once the comment period has closed. Okay, I don't see any more hands raised at the moment. So why don't we give our panel a break? And if you do have a question, you can go ahead and raise your hand, and we will come back online and receive your comment this morning. So thank you. Okay, I do see we have a hand raised from Ian Stewart. So Ian, if you can get, just give us one minute as our panel comes back online. Okay. Ian, I have unmuted you, and you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ian Stewart. I'm president of Rail Propulsion Systems. And I want to make sure I stay on the scope of this meeting and give our support for the Option 1. It's been supported by some of the other speakers and want to show our support for expansion of passenger rail in all forms, be it our focus, which is commuter rail and improving metropolitan areas, and its interface with the larger projects and interstate projects such as this one. So thank you all for your efforts. And if there's anything we can do to support zero emissions locomotives in any of these projects, we are more than happy to do so and speak with you about it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Ian, thank you very much for your comment this morning. Again, we are going to be here until 11:00 AM. Again, we are going to be here until 11:00 a.m. this morning to receive your comments. So if you do have a comment, or if you have already given a comment this morning and would like to provide an additional one, you can go ahead and use that raise hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. And we will be able to take your comments in this morning. While we're rating, I did want to call attention to this slide. And that's how you can stay involved. So we do have a number of resources on here, including the project website, our Project Facebook, and the FRA website. And those are going to be really good resources for you to continue to stay involved with the project, keep up to date on what is going on. And the RCTC project website in particular has our project fact sheet, the project FAQ, and has a few additional resources on there in case you were looking for more information. The RCTC project website is also going to be where you can find the recording of today's hearing, as well as the recording from Tuesday's hearing, as well as the English presentation. And we also have a Spanish presentation as well. So you can find all of those great resources on that website. We do also have the project email here, the cvrail@rctc.org email. And I just would like to remind you that if you do have an official public comment, to please use the regulations.gov link that we have provided in the chat. So anything that comes through our project email will not be considered part of the public record. But again, as we wait, we can go ahead and give our panel a little bit of a break this morning. But we will be back if anyone has either an additional comment or if would like to provide your first comment this morning. So thank you. And for those who are still with us this morning, I just wanted to let you know how you can continue to submit comments after today. So again, we are taking your official public comments today during this time. And we will be here until 11:00 to do so. But if you have additional comments, you can use the online form that is the regulations.gov website that we have shown here, as well as linked in the chat. And if you would like to provide an official comment via mail, I have provided that information on the screen. And we just asked that comments that are mailed in, they should be postmarked July 6th or earlier. So again, the official end of the public comment period is July 6th. So there is still time left to provide your public comments. And again, we will be here until 11:00 a.m. Thank you for those who are still joining us this morning. Again, as I've mentioned earlier, this is the final portion of today's agenda. So if you would like to go ahead and start your weekend, we thank you for joining us this morning. We are going to be here until 11:00 a.m. to take in your verbal public comments. And as a reminder, this meeting is going to be recorded and posted to the project website following today's hearing. If you could just give us a couple of days for that to be posted. All that information will be on there, as well as the presentation slides. So if you would like to go ahead and start your weekend, that would be great. Thank you again for joining us. If you have an additional comment, we are going to be here until 11:00 a.m. And we did have a couple of questions come in through the Q and A. And those have been responded to through the Q and A feature. So if you open up the Q and A box and click over to the answered column, you can see answers to those questions that were received, as well as a record of the other questions that were asked during the Q and A period. But we did answer those live. So unfortunately, you won't be able to see answers to those questions. But again, we do have the today's hearing recorded. So if you wanted to go back and listen to those, you will be able to do so. That recording will be posted on the RCTC project website in a few days. Good morning and welcome to those who are just joining us this morning. We are taking official public comments until 11:00 a.m. Unfortunately, you did miss the presentation earlier today. But I will share the project video right now, just for you to be a little more acquainted with the project and what is going on. And then after the video, we can take your public comments this morning. We are only taking verbal public comments. So if you would like to provide a comment this morning, you can go ahead and utilize the raise hand feature. Otherwise, I will let you know how you can continue to provide public comments and other methods. So here is our video for you to get a little more background information on our project.
Living in Southern California gives us access to the ocean, the mountains, the city, and the desert. With a growing number of entertainment options, it's no wonder the Coachella Valley is seeing a record-breaking number of visitors each year. But traveling along I-10 in either direction can be frustrating due to traffic and hours behind the wheel. Wouldn't it be great if we had a more relaxing way to travel? Southern California has the second busiest passenger rail corridor in the nation, extending north and south between San Diego and Santa Barbara. What's missing is the west-east connection between Los Angeles and the Coachella Valley. The Coachella Valley-Sangorogno Pass Rail Corridor Service proposes to connect Southern California communities to the beautiful Coachella Valley, providing a reliable and environmentally friendly way to access many attractions. The Riverside County Transportation Commission, Caltrans, and the Federal Railroad Administration are proposing a 144-mile passenger rail corridor to help get you out of your car and on your way to a new adventure. Let's take a peek at the future possibilities. At the western end of the rail line is picturesque Los Angeles Union Station, which boasts the largest railroad passenger terminal in the western United States with countless local and regional connections. Traveling east from Los Angeles, the first stop is revitalized downtown Fullerton. Listen to music, discover architecture, and enjoy this popular entertainment destination and cultural center. This stop also provides access to Disneyland and other amazing attractions and venues in Orange County. Our journey continues east to downtown Riverside. This bustling area offers museums, theaters, dining, and the historic Mission Inn Hotel and Spa that sponsors its annual Festival of Lights. A station in the Sangorogno Pass will provide access to the growing communities of Banning and Beaumont, a world-class resort and spa, shopping, and the famous Cabazon dinosaurs. Our next stop is Palm Springs, the vibrant and legendary getaway city with great nightlife and stunning desert scenery. The line continues east to the heart of the beautiful Coachella Valley, home to premier golf courses, dining, resorts, spas, gaming, and miles of hiking and cycling trails, including Joshua Tree National Park. Our journey finishes at the eastern end of the rail line with potential stops in Indio and Coachella near world-renowned music festivals and unique celebrations, such as the Date and Tamale Festivals. Whether you're traveling east or west, there's a new adventure waiting for you at each stop. We're approaching our next milestone of the project with the release of the draft environmental impact statement, Environmental Impact Report. While service is still years away, we are laying the foundation and actively seeking funding now to make this journey a reality for the future. Visit our webpage to learn more about this innovative project. Most importantly, we want to hear from you. So please provide your feedback on our draft environmental document. We are on this journey together. So let's imagine the possibilities of the future.
So thank you again. If you are just joining us this morning, that was an overview of our project. But this morning, we are taking official public comments for the record. So if you would like to provide a comment to the panel this morning, you can go ahead and use the raise hand feature that's located at the bottom of your screen in your Zoom panel. If you are a call-in user, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and that will notify me that you would like to provide a verbal public comment. So, excuse me, we will be here until 11:00 a.m. to receive your comments. But if you do not wish to provide a verbal comment this morning, you may use the regulations.gov website that we have provided in the chat. Or you can mail in your comment and that information is on the screen now. So again, we will be here until 11:00 a.m. Thank you for joining us this morning. And again, there are multiple ways you can continue to stay involved with our project. We have a few options listed here, and that's including the RCTC website. That's rctc.org/cvrail. That is our main project website. And there are a lot of great resources on there, including our project fact sheet, the project FAQ. And we are going to be linking the presentation in English and Spanish on there for you to review afterward, in case you wanted to sit a little more with the presentation slides today. We will also be posting the video of today's public hearing, as well as Tuesday's public hearing. So if you missed out on Tuesday's public hearing, the content that was provided was the same. But you are free to review both of those. And if you need to jump off this morning, go ahead and start your weekend. We are going to be here until 11:00. But again, if you need to drop off and start your weekend, you can review the public hearing video of today in a few days. And that will be posted to the RCTC project website. We also have a lot of great information for you on our project Facebook. You can go ahead and follow the project Facebook and be up to date of what is happening with our project. And there are also a lot of great resources on the FRA website that we have listed below. We also have our project email listed on here. But again, if you do want to provide a written comment today that would need to go through the regulations.gov website, anything that comes in through our project email will not be considered part of the record. So again, we are taking your official public comments this morning and we will be here until 11:00. So again, we are taking your official public comments this morning, and we will be here until 11:00. For those of you who are just joining us this morning, there are multiple ways to access the draft Tier One Program EISEIR. You can find that document linked on our project website, that's rctc.org/cvrail. You can also access it through the FRA website listed on the screen as well as the regulations.gov website that I keep referring to. The regulations.gov link is posted in the chat, so if you would like to access that through the digital copies, you can do so using that link. But if you would like a printed copy, those are available at the post locations. The Riverside County Transportation Commission offices, those are only available by appointment. So again, there are multiple ways to access the document, both online and through printed copies. And thank you to those who are still with us this morning. Again, we are going to be here until 11:00. So if you have an additional comment you would like to provide to the panel today, you can go ahead and use your raise hand feature, and that will notify us that you would like to provide a second comment for the panel this morning. So again, we are going to be here until 11:00, taking in your, your comments today. I did want to call attention to the chat feature. We have just linked the project back sheet and project FAQ. So those are some great resources if you have additional questions or if you would like additional information. And those are great resources to share as well. So if you have someone who's interested in the project but wasn't able to make it today, those are some great resources to share with them. Thank you again for those who are still with us. We have about 15 more minutes for today's public hearing. So if you would like to provide a comment or provide a second comment to our panel, you can go ahead and use the raise hand feature that's going to be located at the bottom of your screen or in the Zoom app panel. So again, we are going to be here for another 15 or so minutes, and we are happy to take your comment this morning. And for those who are still with us this morning, we are going to be here for another 10 minutes. So if you did have a comment you would like to leave for our panel this morning, you may do so for the next 10 minutes. But if not, you can leave additional comments via the online form. Again, that is the regulations.gov website that I have listed here as well as posted in the chat. And we have the mailing address. You can send printed comments as well. So there are multiple ways for you to still provide your comment after today, and those are going to be available to you until July 6th. So July 6th is the last day to provide official public comments. So if you didn't want to leave a comment today, you have until then to do so. And for those of you who are still with us this morning, we are going to be here for another five minutes. But I just wanted to call attention again to this slide for you to stay involved in what's going on with the project. There are a lot of great resources on our RCTC project website that's listed here. And you can also get more updates on our project Facebook. And again, there are great resources also on the FRA website that is listed. And you can also contact us through the cvrail@rctc.org email that is listed here. Again, anything that comes through that email will not be considered part of the official comment record. But you can go ahead and utilize that regulations.gov website that we have linked in the chat to provide written comments as well. So again, we are going to be here for a few more minutes, and then we will close out today. So if you would like to review either today's public hearing recording or Tuesday's public hearing recording, those are going to be made available on our RCTC project website in, in the coming days. on our RCTC project website in the coming days. Okay, seeing as we don't have any other hands raised this morning, I just would like to remind you that after today, you can submit comments through the online form, regulations.gov, and via mail. That is going to be that information is on the screen now. But you can find that information on our project website. That's rctc.org/cvrail. So I do encourage you to check that following today's meeting. So we are at 10:59, just about 11:00. So I will ask our panelists to come back on and close today's meeting.
All right, thank you, everyone, again, for your time and attention on a Saturday morning. We appreciate your time here with us, your time reviewing the documents and your time submitting comments. We really do look for public comments in projects like these to make sure that we're that we're addressing the need that the public might see. And also, some of these comments really do help to make our project better, both now and future Tier Two projects that might have actual real construction things associated with them. Those that input that we're receiving today is useful not only to this document, but documents in the future. So again, thanks for your time.
Yes, and on behalf of RCTC, I also want to thank you for your time and participation in this process. We look forward to wrapping this up by the end of the year and pressing on for the next phases of this effort. So once again, thank you for your time and have a great day.